All right, so we will call the meeting to order and establish a quorum. First time in a long time that we're all here. Public comments?
Public comments.
Remember to hold the mic close so these speakers can make sure it's recorded properly.
Okay. Public comments on items, not on the agenda. I've got one speaker card from Eric on story polls.
Everybody's favorite subject, story polls. I want to follow up on last week's meeting and particularly the things that Commissioner Ahhi was saying. I went up into 385, 389 where they have changed the story polls to the pennants, and I have to say the pennants are a real improvement over the mesh. I really think that they make it easier to see the three dimensions of the building in a way that the mesh doesn't show. So I think A, the pennants are a good idea, and B, everybody should be encouraged to use them. Which leads me to my comments from last time. I don't remember being asked what I thought about story polls, but I'm not shy about standing up and telling you what I think, so here it is. I think story polls are a great idea, and I think this for a reason. Back in the long ago days when television came in two colors, I took an examination over several days that supposedly told me what I was good at. Actually, it was much better telling me what I wasn't good at. One of the parts of it was something called spatial relations. You have a box with one side of it that's colored, and you have to figure out which of the boxes printed is the box when you put it together. I was third percentile. I thought this was a theoretical construct, but it turns out you can actually be third percentile in something. I'm completely hopeless when it comes to imagining what something is going to look like. I am design impaired, and I find story polls tremendously helpful for me in figuring out what a building is going to look like when it's up. That, number one. Number two, with time, as you go and look at it, as I do, and you look at it, and you look at it, and you look at it, you have a better sense of the way the building is going to be and the way it fits, and you can perhaps come to a sense that you could live with it when your first reaction might have been, oh my god, it's a hulking huge thing. So I'm very much in favor of the story polls. I'm very much in favor of story polls with pennants. How long they get to stay up is another issue, but I really think that they are very helpful, particularly for those of us who are design impaired. All of you are in professions where design impairment would be a real problem. I'm not, fortunately, I guess for me. But it really does make a difference, and I think there are probably more of me than there are of you. So I encourage you to continue with the story polls. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? We'll close public comments and move to the consent calendar. Item number one, Planning Commission minutes. Go ahead.
Thank you. I'd like to respond, of course, to comments attributed to me, which would be on page two, since I won't presume anyone else's comments. So in the second line, it talks about something about a conditioning requirement for a one-foot sidewalk. That sounds like a balance beam rather than a sidewalk. I think that was the talk about the extra one-foot easement on the five-foot sidewalk, which would make it six feet. So however that's worded now isn't correct. So maybe mention the easement to make for a six-foot total sidewalk or something. Towards the end, it says, "Provide a two-material elevator tower with a step-down portion would be better." And that's actually not what I said. I did start out saying that the initial drawings that had two materials may have been objectionable because the two materials really highlight that there's two different things going on. But I thought that all the one elevation was, in one material, was too much. So what I actually had recommended was that there be one material with a step-down for the portion, and to see what that might look like.
Yes. Steve, just give us a minute.
I think I just want to point out at the end of the notes on the action items that absent should be me rather than Commissioner Ahhi, as he was part of the meeting and has shared notes.
I move that we approve the minutes of April 4th with the corrections as mentioned.
I'll second that. I want to point out that the correction probably applies to, and I'm sorry, I didn't notice this, applies to the action on the very last page where then the instruction under the action was break up the elevator tower stair tower by introducing a mix of materials. And I don't think that that was necessarily a commission. If you were echoing the incorrect attribution to me, it shouldn't be then. Now, if there were other commissioners who said that, then that's fine, but I don't want to compound the error by stating it twice if that's attributed to me. So with that, with those amendments, I would second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Passed unanimously. We'll move on to item number two. First Place Village, 385, 387, 389, First Street.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Steve Golden, Senior Planner. This is a development proposal that includes a design review and subdivision tentative map applications for a new three-story mixed-use building with 10 residential condominium units, 2,100 square feet of office space, rooftop common area, and one level of underground parking garage with a mechanical parking lift system. The existing site includes two one-story commercial buildings, which are about 3,200 square feet, and the addresses are 385, 387, and 389, First Street. This, as you noted in your discussion of the minutes, it was discussed at the April 4th, 2019 Planning Commission meeting, and you discussed the design review and subdivision applications. And following the public comment and the commission discussion, you unanimously voted to continue the applications, and you gave specific direction to the applicant to address concerns and design-related issues. And they are noted in the staff report, but I'll just briefly mention them. The concerns were securing the garage, address the framing appearance and detailing at the front of the building, reduce the bulkiness of the tower elevator, or the elevator tower, provide railing details and window details. You wanted the applicant to return with a complete materials board, address the side elevation, exterior materials and detailing, and address the potential exterior light impacts. So this was the design that you, on the monitor here, this was the design that you reviewed, and the applicant worked on a revised design to address the commission's concerns, particular attention to the front elevation and side elevations where that had the most concerns. They tried to address the tower element to reduce the bulkiness. And I won't go into a lot of the details of how they attempted to address their concerns. The architect is here and has a presentation, so I'll let him kind of summarize their ideas of how they were addressing all of your concerns. But this was the, sorry, this was the original design. This is the design concept that they came up with. It was submitted to staff, and we reviewed it, and we were a little bit concerned that this design, while it was good intentions to address your concerns, it didn't fully address concerns that staff had previously had on the project, and also given the peer review design consultant their concerns that were addressed in the report that they submitted. And we shared those concerns with the architect, feeling like this design might not get them to sort of a favorable consideration by the commission. And so it was a little bit late in the process trying to get the agenda out to the commissioners. So we went ahead with this design in the staff report and gave a brief analysis of this design. And so with that, the applicant took staff's comments and then came up with another alternative, which we emailed as quickly as possible electronically out to the commissioners, and the architect has brought the hard copies for your review tonight. It's maybe a little bit different than typical review process, but there is a lot of design elements that they're trying to address with differing perspectives, so they were, you know, doing as best as they could. So this is the alternative that, there's actually sort of an alternative in a little bit of another detail with the glass rail alternative. So they're trying to give you different flavors of what could be possible within the realm of the design that they're proposing. So it's really your decision and determination how you'd like to proceed with these designs. As discussed in the staff report, the commission could consider recommending approval of either design. You could recommend approval with certain modifications or conditions to the design, or you could continue this item for yet another Planning Commission meeting. But that's kind of your, up to your discretion what you'd like to do. I'm happy to answer any questions, but the architect does have a presentation to go over all the details with you if you want to start there.
I'd be fine moving forward. Everyone else is? I guess my question, we have your report on the, I guess, version 2.0, we're on version 3.0. Is there anything you'd like to comment on from staff level on version 3.0?
So we feel, well, we did give direction on 2.0, which is this one. We kind of felt like, well, we put it in the staff report.
Right, that's the staff report.
So what we did feel like on this alternative, the front elevation, sort of the massing of the balconies is less in this. There's more sort of transparency in that surround around the balcony, it's removed. So this doesn't feel as kind of bulky at the second and third story. The mixed materials on the side elevation is probably a better approach than version 2.0. And there were, we did give some feedback regarding the glass. We didn't particularly like the glass over the windows, which were like the Juliet balconies on the right part of the front elevation. So they went back to the metal railing, and then gave you kind of a, sort of another alternative, which could be glass, a mixture of glass and the metal railing. So we felt like this 3.0 design was probably in the direction that we thought was a little bit more favorable from just the architectural composition, the massing and kind of bulkiness that the 2.0 kind of gave us. So that's kind of our perspective, but given kind of the brief time that we had to look at as well. I would say with this one detail, which I think shows up throughout, and it was commented on at the April 4th meeting, and we've thought about it a little bit more, but there's the tile on the first story elevation as it wraps around the building. If it's feasible, that wrapping should actually go probably 10 feet back because the building next to it, which is on the right-hand side, that one-story building, when it redevelops, it might be a residential project, which would require a 10-foot setback, and then that side of the building would be revealed. So wrapping that material around, if at all possible, although you wouldn't see it at this time, once that building's removed, you know, to have that material there. Or some condition, if at all possible, to then apply that material at that time, it would look a lot better than not having that wrapped around in what our viewpoint is, so... But I'll kind of leave it at that.
I just have one question. Is there any difference between these two images?
It's kind of hard to tell, but I believe, I'll try here, yeah. Actually, let me, better, okay, I can also pull up the PDF. This is just what I pulled in from PowerPoint. But the one on the right, the railing along the balcony is a glass railing. It's very hard, I agree, it's hard to see because the way that this is, it's kind of hard to see that, but...
I see vertical lines though, it's on the window.
In the middle?
There's, if you can see where my cursor is, yeah, there is metal railing on this side, if I'm correct, and then glass railing at the balconies. And then let me pull up the plans, too. But if you...
Yeah, but any other questions for staff?
Is the mic laying down? Is that on or off?
Okay, so we'll start with the presentation.
Give me one second, so I can find where I hit it here. Okay.
I'll have to make this too loud.
You can just take it off.
There's a pinch the...
Yeah, but then I only have two hands.
I can hold it for you if you want.
I'll walk and talk, I guess.
And you have the clicker there, right?
Yes, I do. Just make sure it's working. I gotta figure, I gotta remember how to do it each time.
Oh, you know what?
Thank you. Oh, they gotta give me a different one?
No, it works, we just needed to get the procedure.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you again, Jeff Potts, SDG Architects. Thank you all for hearing us again. I do want to thank staff for helping us with a quick review. I don't often say it, but I think their last change was a favorable change and kind of led us back down a path we'd been down before. So I want to focus on what you are all calling version 3.0. In reality, it's about version 7.0, but we'll just walk through that quickly. I'm going to skip past some of the early stuff that we spoke about last time and kind of get to the meat of what we're talking about here, and that is the elevation changes. So based on the last meeting, we did go back, we looked at framing out the quote-unquote googly eyes a little bit differently. What you're seeing there in the upper right is that last meeting's submittal, and the lower corner is what we submitted to staff, sort of as our next version, which was addressing many of the concerns. But where we really landed after Steve and John had a chance to review, was going to something a little lighter on both of the balconies at both floors, and you really can kind of pick up that it feels much less closed in when you look at the building from the two sides, is where you're really going to feel it the most. But it really opened up the front elevation. In this main version that we submitted, we did go with all metal railings still. I was a little concerned with mixing the glass and the metal together architecturally, but as we kind of delved into it further, we did decide that maybe the larger balconies with the glass versus the smaller Juliet balconies with the metal wasn't too of a, much of a divergence from the two elevations, so you'll see that. So the main changes here, again, we got rid of the frames at the lower level, turned them into a more open balcony, thinned that balcony up a little bit as well, changed the material on it. In the middle tower element, we removed the door feature and the railing and all that that was somewhat cluttering up the tower and tying everything together too much, and we went back to some window features there with the awning details. And then over on the right, we added the awning details to the lower group of windows and kept the metal railing. And again, we've looked at and have provided a glass version at the big balconies, I'll call them. So all the Juliettes would still be metal, and the rail at the big balconies would be glass. Unfortunately, we don't have the sketch-up because we actually had it in there where you could turn them on and off and take a look at those. But hopefully, we can kind of look at that last image and see. Again, on the sides, the last submittal that you guys looked at was the first PC submittal there, and then the bottom was what we had initially submitted, again with the glass rails and a little bit of a different feature on the sides. Where we really ended up is a little bit back to where we were. The fake windows and the two-tone color wasn't really doing it. We feel that the wood, even if someone builds up next to it, will hold up well as long as we seal it like a final time before they cover it. It's, you know, decay-resistant species of wood, and we really like just sort of the texture that it gives the side elevation there. And again, we changed the balconies out at this mid-side area, and then here you can see the split in the stair versus the elevator tower. I did hear, I thought what you guys said was not two-tone, but to split them and leave them one material, and so that's kind of where we went with that. So I'm glad to hear I was listening. And again, the rear elevation, we kind of carried all those same themes through, so this was the original submittal to staff, and this is sort of where we ended up with what we believe is the best design today. And again, went to the lighter balcony, tried to wrap that all the way around. I didn't want to leave the sides and rears a little different than what we ended up with on the front. And so we wrapped that balcony feature around with the lighter metal columns, with the rails, with the metal railings on the Juliet balcony. We did split up the large window massing on the right-hand side a little bit. It was getting a little too glass and a little too bulky, so we broke that down a little bit, got a little bit more of the wood in there, so you can sort of feel that material a little bit better. And again, the same thing on the side. This was the first submittal, and we kind of went back to this. And again, you can kind of see on the stair tower, we actually on this side adjusted the elevator tower to actually just break the, not only the vertical plane of that wall, but the horizontal plane of that wall as well. That really helped us with the rear to get that balcony to look proportionally correct as well. Quickly, I'll just go through the street view. So this was the last submittal that you guys saw. I apologize, these are a little bit small. I'm not sure if we can blow them up if we need to or not. This was the first submittal to staff, all three of those views, and this is sort of our final best submittal, we believe. And you can see on the corners of the building, if you look sort of at the corner edges, you get a little bit more transparency through that balcony feature on the side where you're not getting either one or two-story mass, you're getting a little bit of a lighter feature there. And this, and again, if we might be able to blow it up, but the main difference here is that you're seeing, you know, the desire to go, and actually, the owner would really prefer the glass element there as opposed to the, thank you, as opposed to the railing element. And we kind of changed up the detailing of that a little bit to mix with the rail a little better than just your sort of clean glass line. So we did put a metal top and bottom rail. We added some metal middle rail so that it sort of blends in nicely with the metal rails at the Juliet balcony. And we did agree that the glass there was not ideal, but we were a little kind of torn on mixing it up too much in that area. Oh, I went too fast. And again, I'd like to thank staff for their input. I think it was a big improvement. I don't like to say that too much, as I noted, but it was a big improvement to get those balconies and a little less mass on there. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. I did bring a smaller material board that you guys can look at with the wood, the stucco, small stone tile, a couple of photographs. I've got a large window over here. I've got the larger stone veneer and a larger stucco sample as well, if you guys would like to see those. I spent a great deal of time trying to get my hands on a glass rail and a metal rail and was unsuccessful to date.
So you're showing on the materials board, there's two stucco colors, but I'm not sure I see that on there.
Only the lighter color exists on the final version.
I see, okay.
We put them both on there because you guys were going to be weighing both versions of the building, so we wanted to make sure we represented both of those.
I see, okay, got it.
And we did, I'm sorry, we did, that was one other big change. The entire building was the darker color before, and there seemed to be a consensus that it was a little too heavy and maybe muddy, and so we went with that lighter color on the whole building.
We didn't run out of time, Mr. ... What type of wood is this?
Cedar.
Cedar.
Does anyone else have questions? I have one. The, the wood on here looks, is there, the wood on here looks somewhat monotone, and on there, there's a lot of variation, and so just curious which...
Yeah, I mean, typically, when you stain like a cedar or something like that, you're going to get a lot more variation in the color of the wood, just based on the colors of the pieces that you have that you're staining. And so the intent is it will be more varied, for sure, when it actually gets stained like that.
Okay, so it'll be stained in place, or some, I mean, it'll be stained not...
It'll be stained in place, yeah.
So we'll open it up for public comments. If anyone has, could fill out a card. So far, I only have one from Eric.
Since I spoke on this last time, I thought it would come up, and my comments are based on what was in the packet, so this is all new to me, too. My general impression of the new design was I liked it much, much better. I thought that it flattened the design, it made it less bulky and less hulking, and so I thought that was a real improvement. And I like this even better. I think that this is, this is pretty much a winner. I like the metal, not the glass. That's me. But I think that this meets most of the questions that I raised and that you had raised. I think it's much more interesting on the size. I think the wood, and all of the wood, actually is a real improvement, so I, I'm happy with it. So I thought I would, since, follow up on last time by making that comment.
Thank you.
For the architect.
Let me just close public comment. Close the public comment.
Can you just explain why there's a preference for the glass on the balconies?
I think that, well, there was a preference from the Planning Commission or several commissioners before to get a little, get the glass there, and that maybe muted some of the light. I think the actual preference for the glass is the owner's going to live in one of these units, and he prefers the glass. And then as we got it on there, the mix seemed to kind of complement the building and wasn't distracting to have the two different types of railings. And so we felt that, you know, putting the glass on the bigger balconies where the doors are more likely to have open curtains and things like that would mute some of the light, give him the glass that he was looking for. And the railings, the glass didn't really fit on the doors on the side piece, and those are bedrooms, which would typically have closed shades and things like that. So that's kind of how we landed on that version.
Can you describe the nature of the glass? What type of glass it is and what you...
Yeah, and actually, on, in the first package, there's actually just some spec material on the glass itself on the sample page, I believe, that you received. The intent would be, our first intent, and I was hoping to have some samples for you today, and I apologize for that, is they make sort of a translucent white film that is sandwiched between the laminates of the glass. And the other option was going to be more of a brown tinted glass, but it's like a laminated, you know, thick railing type of glass that does come in numerous colors. And so the color chart that we were working with was down there on the right-hand bottom The intent was that it wasn't completely clear, though, because that wouldn't solve sort of the light issue that was brought up.
Okay, so, I mean, just to be clear, so you will, you haven't selected the tint yet? You guys are studying it, right?
Well, we, in our minds, had selected it, and then they told me they'd send me several glass samples, so I would like to hold the judgment on that and make sure we like the glass sample. We can certainly work with the staff to make sure they like the glass sample as well.
Understood. So it would have a color tone and it will be translucent, not transparent, right?
Correct.
Which color tone?
Again, originally, we were waiting on the translucent white in there, but we do like the more tan color as well with the building itself. And so they were going to send me samples of the green and the white and the tan, that we can make a final selection on that color.
And did you study at all, I think the last time, we had talked about what that, with the new, there's some confusion about the additional one-foot setback on the sidewalk, and then what that planter was actually going to look like. I think it was on A6. It wasn't in the new package, and so I wasn't sure if you had had a chance to...
Yeah, I mean, we reviewed that condition originally when it came up, and for the most part, we had the planters already pushed back that extra distance because in the workshop, we were asked to make sure there was room for people to sit there without impeding on that existing sidewalk. And so for the most part, we have room for that. The ground-level planter, obviously, is going to be a foot smaller than it originally was, but I don't think that's going to greatly affect what can be planted there.
Do we have that A6 from the original?
I have A5 here, has the plants actually on it. So you can see on the larger planter that had the seat wall, we had already pushed it back the foot. And then on this side, you know, we looked at the 2'10 at the narrow part, and it didn't seem like it was going to be a major issue from planting standpoint.
But the setback is the line that's going right through the planter?
The setback is the line that's at an angle.
It's the dark one.
That's, the bottom line's the property line, the next line is the setback line, correct?
It's on our side.
Oh, sorry. Can't see me pointing over there. So this dark line is the property line?
Right.
And then the setback line is this line that continues through here.
And so that line...
And the planters and the plants are allowed to be in that area.
They are. So it'll go all the way to the property?
It'll go to the, well, this planter, oops, sorry. The planter on the right will go to the edge of the ultimate edge of the sidewalk. The planter on the left was already pushed back the foot. And then the planter over here is actually at grade, and so it's obviously going to lose a foot, but it was the largest of the planting areas as well.
Got it. Okay, thanks for that clarification.
And then, just to clarify, too, as Steve mentioned, I had actually noticed on the side that the stone didn't quite go all the way to the adjacent building. My suggestion was going to be that we just pull that to the adjacent building, both base and roof. Future, I mean, certainly a condition could be placed that it be added to match. I don't know if it can be placed on the next development when they pull their building away or not, but certainly, you know, I believe this owner's going to want to make sure that his building maintains, you know, that integrity. And seeing a line of stone like that would probably not be pleasing, and so I imagine it would be replaced either way. But certainly, a condition of approval is not an issue.
Great, thank you.
Do you want to start?
Sure. So, just to clarify, we're no longer going to be considering 2.0, is that correct? Yeah, so we are talking about 3.0, so no references to 2.0, which is a good thing, because I had a long list of notes about 2.0, which some isn't really relevant anymore. I think in general, from where you were at 2.0, I think this is a dramatic improvement all the way around. I think the resolution that you've come up with, which is the, basically the elimination of the larger frames at the side of the entry volume, is successful. And the way that it's resolved itself with open balconies, I think, and I believe you have made it symmetrical, meaning that the balcony on the left has gotten a little bit less wide than previously. And I think that's also quite successful as well. If you look at the front elevation, I think the way that the balconies work with the central circulation element and entry element is, in my opinion, much, much better resolved with this particular scheme. My preference would be to, that you consider moving away from the glass in the balconies and going with the metal railings. I think, again, there's something stronger about simplicity, and I think mixing the two languages may or may not prove to be successful. Again, part of, I think what's successful here is that things are becoming a little bit more simpler, more straightforward, and you're providing more depth without making it bulky. So I think, from an architectural, purely architectural standpoint, I think the moves that you're making are successful. And I think they're moving this project in a much better direction. I do have still some concerns regarding the general language of the frames, which here in the front elevation, you're left with one frame. In the other elevations, I believe, that's not quite the case. The other, so to me, there seems to be a little bit of lack of consistency between the elevations. Particularly, I think there's, to me, a disconnect, or there's a potential to really improve the rear elevation by treating it in a similar way as you are treating the front elevation, meaning the right-hand volume of the rear elevation. Again, I think there's something, if you look at the plans, it's a little bit more consistent that that reads as a bar, right? And if you've articulated it as a stucco volume on the front elevation, I think maybe it's, again, more simple to treat it in a similar way in the rear elevation as a stucco surface. Do you follow what I mean? It's, no. The rear elevation, the volume to the right, you see it's framed and there's wood insert. It seems to me that it would be a little bit more straightforward if you just kept that volume as a stucco volume, right? Because that volume runs through and becomes a stucco volume on the front.
You mean everything?
What's that?
Are you saying everything is the...
Right, so that you would not have a frame expression at that right volume. Well, okay, and then if you look at it, well, I guess what I'm looking for is more consistency in the way you treat the surfaces, because I, it's a little bit confusing why you're treating certain volumes as clad in wood versus stucco.
The simple answer is the volumes are fine. You're fine talking, but if you just go to the mic.
The most simple answer to your question is the volumes or the wall planes that are behind the metal balconies are the stucco volumes, and the volumes where the wall surface is proud of those balconies and closest to the street or the alley, those are the wood surfaces. And so it is framed similarly, if you kind of flip around to the front, to the piece on the right. The other slight difference is this one piece on the back right is the only two-story unit, and that's a two-story volume. And so that space is a little bit special or unique as well. But in general, basically, the stucco is behind where there's a balcony that it's recessed to, and the wood is where it's proud.
Okay. Well, I guess I'm looking at your courtyard elevation B, which, again, to me, is quite successful because you're differentiating two volumes. I can have a, I have a much sort of clearer understanding of the diagram of the building in a sense, and it kind of carries on through to the elevations. And I think, to me, this is quite successful. So I would urge you to take a look at the possibility of having a similar or consistent treatment on the rear elevation as well, and perhaps also on courtyard elevation A. In terms of the frame itself, I was wondering, I think, again, it does not seem to have really changed from version 2.0 or 1.0 to 2.0 to 3.0. And I'm wondering if there's a way that you could look at the proportion of that frame, and maybe there's a possibility, I'm not sure what the dimension is, it looks to me like it's either 14 inches or 18 inches wide. If you can begin to sort of make that a little bit more refined, I think it will add to the lightness of the overall appearance of this, of this, of this building, and also reinforce sort of what you've already begun with the balconies and the lightning of the elements. So, again, being consistent with that thought, if you turn this, turn the attention to the right elevation, this kind of mega-framing that you've established, mega-border that you've established, seems to me a little bit heavy-handed, or I should say a lot, you know, very heavy-handed, and feels a little bit, yeah, I mean, it makes that face, it calls, first of all, it calls a lot of attention to that face, which may or may not be a great thing. But when you, so when you actually look at it and appreciate it, it feels very, very heavy. So I'm not sure if that's the sort of the impression that you want to leave overall with the way you're treating that. I do appreciate the use of the materials. I think that's successful, and it's probably above and beyond, actually, but I appreciate the gesture. I think those are materials that begin to really sort of work with the environment and our town. On that, and I think there's lots of great things happening here, and I believe it's moving, all moving in the right direction.
So I think that the decision you did to reduce the bulkiness of the tower, I think, was successful. In terms of the side elevation, I think that, I don't mind the new 3.0, the material choice. I just think that, especially when you look at the rendering, sorry, rendering from First Street and Whitney Street going towards San Antonio, it's just the block within a block. I don't know how successful that's going to be once it's finished. I don't know if maybe it involves notching the corners just to make some type of design, or notching the ends in some way, but I just don't know about the rectangle within a rectangle. But I do like the decision to, of what you did with the material. In terms of the front elevation, I do like the 3.0 more than the 2.0. I don't know if it's an either-or in terms of kind of the framed versus the balcony awnings, and then, you know, the railings versus the glass. I think that there's a way to maybe incorporate kind of both. So the courtyard elevations specifically, the rear elevation as well as the courtyard elevation B, you know, you have elements that are kind of open, where you have the balconies, but then you have framed elements as well. So I kind of, I think that for the front, I think that there's a way to maybe have one of those kind of metal awning frames actually be an actual frame, and you could kind of get the best of both in a way. So I would maybe experiment with that of having kind of one of those instead of both of them being that for that. But overall, I do like the 3.0 a lot better. I just think that there's some tweaks that you could do with the front elevation.
So thank you for coming back to us and then being open to staff's suggestions. And I think my kudos to staff for stopping 2.0 from coming in front of us and ensuring that an even better version is what we are looking at. For me, it's like no comparison, 3.0 is far superior. And I was on the fence about whether we should just allow this project to go forward and let them make the changes at the city council level. And I'm so glad that we had it come back because those just two iterations, I think, are resulting in a really fantastic project. So all the things I loved about the project, I won't reiterate, but all the things I didn't like about it, I think you've improved. So I think the color is much improved. I like the lighter versus the yellowy-brown. It just like immediately lifts and creates a lightness for me. I really like the wood on the sides. I mean, when you put the four different examples, it's kind of remarkable how much that one, in my mind, just shone above all the others. And I also think what one comment had articulated before about the googly eyes, it's just really, I just really like the way that you've replaced those boxes with the balconies. And when you look at it even from the side in this image, but I think it was the one before or after, you really do get this sense from, which is how people are going to be perceiving it as they walk this street, that it's, there's more transparency. I don't like the idea of all of a sudden changing the rails to glass, not tinted glass, or I think consistency along that front is, will, is required in my mind. I also like just how you added the feature above the windows on the first floor, just really improved the whole look for me, and I do believe it reduces the bulk of the, or the balcony mass. I think you should wrap it 10 feet unless you keep these materials in a basement somewhere. And even if you did, the light and time and weather isn't going to make any, anything you put on in five years look remotely like a match. So I would do that now as a requirement. As far as the rear, I'm okay with it. I do think that that apartment, that's the, like, the larger two-story on the right, it's fine. It works for me the way it's drawn. And also, I'm, this is a, you know, an alley that it's facing, and I think it's, I think, I like it. So, great job. I feel like this was like a PSA for having things come back to us. I feel like this is like a PSA for having things come back to us.
Okay. Actually, maybe I should let, maybe do you want to, no, you want me to be your guest? Okay. Great improvements, really, this, I don't think anyone's mentioned yet, but I do think that breaking the stair tower and the elevator tower to two different heights, but keeping the materials the same did the trick, in my mind, and I like that you've mentioned that you broke the volume elsewhere, too, though I'm not sure how best to see that, but apparently, on one of the elevations, there's, there's another break on one of the other faces, so I think that makes a huge difference. I like the use of the wood, I want to also thank you, I think that was a generous choice of materials, and I think it really will make that a statement building, a statement residence. I agree with the sentiment that the, the glass balconies maybe don't really work, I'd like to say they do, but I, I think I agree with my colleagues that I think it would look a little awkward. If there were a central, center element where they could just be sort of in the center, then perhaps, but I see why you did it on the two big balcony sides, and then I just think that glass is going to be kind of awkward. Let's see, I don't, I'm not going, the architects have spoken, and we have another one left, and they can go into some of the fine details of the points that were made, but I think you've really taken the feedback into account, and this is looking good.
So I look at the overall goal, and the overall goal which staff had stated, we had all talked about, was reducing the boxy feel of it, and I feel that the treatments on the front balconies and the Juliet balconies is a great improvement, it lightens that up a lot. I personally prefer the glass over railing, but I concur that whatever it is, it should be one or the other, and not a mix, because one of the design concept that works quite well is consistency across the elevations. Except for the blank sides, I have extreme difficulty with the giant billboard that's wood on both sides, not only for the frame, as Du Ho pointed out, but because the rest of the building is really very considered in terms of human scale and the 25-foot module that we're used to seeing in the central business district, even if it's not applied here, there is a sense of breaking up of the volumes that's consistent, except on these, which is why, I'm not saying that it's the best solution, but the one that we saw in the original, which had spandrel glass and pretended to be residential scale, to me, had more of a consistent approach to breaking down the volume, whereas these really jump out. And for me, that is by far the weakest part of the design, it could do with resolution that maybe is vertical and breaks it into three parts, as a suggestion, but something that maintains the rhythm that's wrapping around the building. I don't think you should wrap the tile around the corner at all, I think you should stop at the corner, because I think, as Renit pointed out, who knows what's going to happen and when it's going to happen adjacent, and you're certainly not going to slope it up to follow the existing roof, and I think you should just deal with it as a plain and not worry about it. Light color, dark color, that's chocolate or vanilla, I'm sure that city council will give you their color preferences. For me, because the least favorite, my least favorite building in Los Altos is across the street and is very light with that warm wood color, I would do anything to resist making it look like that, but that is a personal thing. There's a detail that I'd like to point out that no one talks about, because I'm just a fuss budget, but I'd like to see some expression of determination at the top, whether it's the material that ends the top of the elevator tower or the entire volume. Right now, the material comes up, and the way it's rendered, it just stops, and I suspect that there will be some kind of a cap there. I think it would be nice, even if it's just a line, to let us know that there's a reason that the material is ending. But I concur, in general, that although it's excruciating difficult, all these iterations have moved you forward, and I feel that the overall goal, it's never going to be like the pizza building that's there now with a sloped tile roof. On the other hand, I don't think we want that, I think we want something that moves us forward, and the most successful parts of this building are really quite good.
So I concur with what, everything that's been said so far. I think it's really remarkable that not only, you know, you came up with 2.0, but then you saw staff's notes on 2.0 and reacted to that in real time, to put something forward that I think addressed those concerns, so we could consider and have a, you know, better chance of passing it, at this, at this meeting. And so, I think, you know, and thanks to my commissioners as well for basically jumping on this in real time and, and looking at this and, and being able to look at this project really in real time, to try to get this done. So I think, you know, we often ask developers to be more considered in kind of the materials that they are selecting, and to try to reduce the amount of stucco that, or, that's on buildings, and so I think that what, how you guys have treated that rear elevation that's on an alley, and actually spending money on that elevation and having it look refined is, you know, in my mind, something that's actually really well done, and I think elevates the, the building. I think you have the right intent on the left and right elevations, but I concur with Phoebe that there's perhaps a, just a different way of doing that, so it doesn't feel like a billboard, and whether it's, you know, vertical 25-foot modules or whatever that ends up being, I think that that is, you know, fair comment, and probably, you guys have been very receptive to the comments we've made to date, and probably doesn't really materially change, you know, the cost or anything else on how you guys are approaching the project, it's just artistic license, and I think probably does what you're intending to do slightly better. And I do really like the way that you guys have addressed the front and added the balconies and made that all lighter, and even though it's modern, it does have, in my opinion, kind of a more village feel to it with those, with those balconies. I think I could be the only one, but I will be remiss if I didn't repeat it. And to me, it's, you know, I think the building's great, to me, it comes down to the rooftop. And I still don't think it's appropriate in this environment downtown. I think having it, an active rooftop on a three-story building with zero lot lines is different than, you know, four or five-story building on El Camino. You know, this is a very walkable downtown, got, you know, parks across the street, and so I think we're going to run into a lot of problems with noise and, and other things if we start allowing all these buildings downtown to have rooftops, especially when they're pushed up against, against a boundary. So I think that, for me, is, and that whole rooftop is adding this whole element of the stair tower and elevator that's pretty prominent. You know, when you look at the view from Second Street and Lyle Street, it's a pretty big feature that's unlike anything else downtown. And so I think the building is great, I think you guys have been great partners and developers in, in this, and really reacting to everything that we've said from the building design perspective. To me, it just comes down as a, as a planning commission and advisory body, and as we look at kind of long-term, this being the first building downtown that's proposing a rooftop, I, from my perspective, it's just something that I think we need to, to look at more closely, so, but great job, otherwise. Thanks.
Staff, what's our action? We recommend something or not, as the case may be?
Yes, there's a, a design review and a subdivision application before you, so you'd be making a recommendation to the council on that action. The cover sheet includes the recommendation, as staff has drafted it.
Well, actually, staff drafted a recommendation to continue it, so I think that we have a consensus to not continue it. Am I looking around?
But staff's recommendation...
Staff's recommendation to continue was based on 2.0, correct, rather than 3.0? Or, I mean, we can make our own decision, but just want to clarify, or would you still make that same recommendation?
Well, I think, in light of the revised plan that you have reviewed at this meeting, and only discussed at this meeting, I think, and, and most of the context, you know, I think our recommendation would be different than what's in the staff report. So as I presented, there's a few options on the table, which would be approve either design, approve one of the designs with further modification sort of directions or conditions, or continue it again for another planning commission meeting. I think that's probably all the options that you could consider.
Okay, I'll, I'll take a stab at that. So let me start by saying that I move that we recommend approval of the subdivision applications for 17DO2 and 17SDO2, well, DO2, and then for 17SDO2, which is the design review, I believe, is the reverse.
I think you're going to just make a whole recommendation with, I mean, they're pretty internal.
Okay, so I move that we recommend approval of 17DO2 and 17SDO2 with the condition, and we'll see if I can get a consensus on this, that the two sidewall blank elevations be refined further before they go to council for human scale, based on the design of today's date. Does that cover us?
Can I offer a friendly amendment?
Oh, please, wait, I have to get...
She's just done yet, probably, or do you want to?
I think, and the other thing is that the, there be a consistency of railing choice, metal versus glass is that of the designer, and I think that's it. I don't, I don't want to put too many conditions on it. Can I get a second for that?
My, I don't like the glass at all, so if all of a sudden it all became glass, I wouldn't want that.
Ah.
So for me, it's metal.
So do you have a friendly amendment?
So my friendly amendment would be everything you said.
Except?
But delete the glass part.
Okay, so the consistency of design, that's not a problem.
No, I agree.
But you, you wouldn't want glass.
Yeah.
Yes, that would be important.
Okay, then I, I will accept that friendly amendment, but I don't have a second yet.
Do a friendly amendment? Then I'll do that.
Okay, do that.
And then I would make the friendly amendment that we condition the side wrap that we've talked about to be, actually, I kind of like Phoebe's suggestion to just not take the stone around there at all, but I, you know, either 10 foot or not at all, so it's future-proofed in a better way.
Why didn't you just say resolved?
Uh, resolved.
Okay.
That's a friendly amendment, yeah.
I'll accept that amendment as well, that there'll be a resolution of the material at the ground level relative to the side. Anybody else want to amend it? No, all right.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
I'm going to go no, just because of the rooftop.
Because of the roof, active roof.
Yeah.
More work for you, John.
Okay, so we'll go commissioners' reports and comments. We're going to skip that till next week.
I'll get back to you. No, I have...
So I have one for, actually, the meeting that Phoebe and I were at, and then Alex D joined for the study session, which was the Tuesday, April 9th, city council meeting. The items relevant to this body were that the 40 Main Street appeal, even though we haven't seen the latest iteration. The city council upheld staff's denial, and so we will see what happens there. But it was a long discussion, but I actually thought that the discussion went very well, and you could tell who was a lawyer on the council. So I, I thought that was actually a very constructive discussion, so that'll be interesting. And then the other thing that the three of us were there for was the study session for the housing accountability and density bonus and CT zone, so thank you for our presentations. Good news, I thought they were consistent with the information we've heard before, so that, that was reassuring. I think what came out of that meeting, and it was probably about midnight by the time it did, was that the council directed staff to look at the, the on-menu wording in the ordinances and to try to curtail the ability for the double dipping, so one on-menu item at a time, not using an on-menu item twice. And also to look at, I think this is something we've recommended in the past, to look at making our subjective criteria more objective, or the development criteria, that is. So that is, of course, that's, yeah, more in line with state, something that's measurable. So that was, of course, that'll come back to us, I think, as those things are worked through.
Yeah, that was good. If there's a way to circulate the presentation that you had put together, I think that would be helpful, because it was a good, great presentation. Thank you.
I think it's actually available now on the council, if you look at the April 9th council meeting, one of the materials that's available online is the presentation, I believe. I didn't actually click to make sure it downloaded, but it did seem to be there. Okay.
Thanks.
So for, I went ahead and I, I sent this to John already, but I can, we can talk about this maybe at the next one, but I did kind of a chart that shows Los Altos, Mountain View, Palo Alto, and Sunnyvale in terms of the CT zone, and I think that in terms of the height and proximity to residential, I think that that's something that obviously we can have further discussions, but I do think that for future meetings, the ground floor, commercial, retail office, every other city has some type of requirement of keeping some ground floor commercial, and ours currently doesn't.
But you know, this is a thing that would be an item for future discussion.
Yeah.
Because we can't actually look at it, because it's not on the agenda, but...
Okay.
I think, having done the research, we could then ask staff if they could put that on the, for a future agenda item.
Okay. Yeah.
So we will adjourn? Oh?
Do you want a report on future...
Yes, thanks.
Upcoming, upcoming attractions? Coming attractions, so what, what we'll be looking at in the upcoming meetings. So our next meeting, middle May, I believe it's the 16th. Actually, you'll have a number of items on that agenda. The big, big one being the multifamily project at 425 First Street. We'll also have the code amendment that you mentioned about cleaning up the density bonus ordinance about the on-menu, off-menu options. 425 First Street. It's literally, I think, two buildings down from this and right on the corner of First and Lyle. And then also, we'll have a minor, it's a lands, updated landscape plan that's seeking to remove a number of redwood trees on a multifamily project downtown. Since those redwoods were specifically required by the planning commission and council at the time it was built, interestingly, they said those redwoods had a better root system that was contained and lo and behold, the root system is, is going through all of the underground infrastructure. So they're now looking to remove those and replace them, but since it is a modification to a approved landscape plan, it'll come back to the commission for review. And then also at your May, your June meeting, we are looking at bringing the R3 4.5 code amendments back for formal discussion and recommendation at this point. So we'll have a draft code amendment for the commission to consider and see if we can get a recommendation or need to discuss it further. And I think that's about all that we have in the queue at this point. There are a number of larger projects making their way through the process, so I would imagine later into the summer or early fall, you'll have ample topics to discuss.
I'm going to ask one of Phoebe's usual questions now, which is if the redwood item is conducive to being on the consent calendar, then that might be a good place to put it.
Our thoughts exactly.
Okay.
Okay, and we will adjourn. Thanks.